We'll call a regular meeting in New Ulm City Council for February 6, 2018, 4:30 PM. The order, first item on the agendas, your consent agenda items.
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, approve the consent agenda items, any discussion on any? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Get my right spot here, sooner or later. Item 2A, consider motion approved the issuance of a liquor license for Social Incorporated.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, and that's from March 1, 2018, ending June 30, 2018. Any discussion?
Seth, this is, looks like a new business going into, um, the pantry, right?
It used to be the pantry, yeah.
So, good luck on their business, are they here? Anything you want to say? Come up to the mic and just introduce yourself. Come on, come on, it's good PR.
Name and address.
Michelle Seifert, I'm at 1405 Fifth Street North in New Ulm. And we will start this business, yes, around March 1st, first week in March.
Wow, okay, and what are you gonna have? What are you serving?
It's a restaurant and bar, we're gonna do comfort food and different breakfasts in the weekends, things like that, so.
Welcome to our commu- business community.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yes, good luck.
Thanks.
Yeah, luck. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries, good luck. Item number 3A, 1 and 2, consider approval of petition from Timony Ray on behalf of the Prairie Land Development LLP to rezone the following properties, Part 1 of lot, or Outlot 127 from Residential A to Agricultural, no, that'd be, yeah, Agricultural Residential District to R2, the two-family residential district, Part of Outlot 127, 128, 129, 130, 131, from R8 to R1. There we go.
You'll note that the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this action.
I'd like to just add that, uh, at the public hearing, we had no written or oral comments in regards to the rezoning, and, uh, everything was good, so.
I'll offer the motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Item 3B, consider request from Matt Mathewitz on behalf of Prairie Land Development LLP for the variances from side yard and lot depth regulations of the city code to allow twin homes to be constructed on the property located in Outlot 127, which is, street address is 1314 to 1422 Maplewood Drive.
The Planning Commission recommended approval at the January 25, 2018 meeting, and if you look at the overview, um, it's gonna be similar, where we've done, uh, variances for the minimum square footage requirement for a buildable lot, but it's to get these lots developed into twin homes.
Any concerns mentioned at all?
None.
No?
One of my comments, is that the city councils, we have, councils before us, have all seen this with uniquely developed parcels of property and whatnot, no issues with it, I move to approve across to Matt Mathewitz.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Item 4A, consider resolution approving the Minnesota Department of Public Safety Violence Crime Enforcement Team, uh, the BLR Drug Task Force amending the grant agreement A-B-C-E-T 2017 New Ulm Police Department dash 00227 in amount of $130,000.
This would be for the reauthorization, additional funds to reauthorize this program. This is for the BLR Drug Task Force, which has been a continuing funded project.
I'll offer, I'll offer the resolution and waive the reading to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer resolution, waived reading, any more discussion?
This is quite a bit of money, I wonder, we do have our commander here, do we want to have an overview of this, what this is all about?
Is that okay, Myron?
Either one. This was prepared by the commander, so I'm asking, or presented by the chief, I guess.
Uh-oh, now we're gonna get both of them.
There we go.
You just as far as, there's a little bit different issue there, just, uh, can see money being authorized for the next grant cycle.
Myron Whelan, New Ulm Police Department, and, uh, actually, the dollar amount is what is for the next half or the biennium of the, the grant cycle here, so, again, this is, money's very well needed for, uh, funding both the task force commander and several other agents, there's a total of four full-time agents, and they are busy all the time.
Good. Any questions, Myron?
So, we have the, we have Brown County, we have Redwood County, and we have Lyon County, is it Lincoln?
Uh, Lyon and also Renville.
So, is it Renville, not Redwood, then?
Uh, yes, Redwood, Lyon, Renville, and Brown.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions?
That's all I have.
Thank you, Myron.
Thank you.
No more questions, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 5A, consider authorizing purchase of the Economic Development Authority-owned partial 001.001.063.10.100, south, south and adjacent to the Keasling House for an additional Keasling House Park at a cost of $25,000. Top?
Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Department. President Schmitz and councilors, this is a question for you, uh, there are two parcels of land in the Keasling Park neighborhood, uh, the parcel to the north is where the house is, and that's Keasling Park, and then there's a sliver to the south of that, which is owned by the EDA, and this is a question to you about, uh, bringing that into the fold of Park and Recreation, and maybe completing Keasling Park is one way to look at it. Uh, I've had conversations with, uh, city leadership and, uh, the EDA coordinator, it's gone through Park and Recreation Commission, and they, um, all seem to recommend that this is an appropriate direction to go, um, to transfer ownership of the EDA parcel to the city, and include it in Keasling Park, um, and it's valued at about $25,000 on the county, um, assessment rule.
Do you have any money?
Uh, there is money available in the land acquisition account.
Okay. I guess where I'm coming from is, I'm on EDA, and maybe shouldn't say it, but, why do we want to pay for it? Would you accept it? I mean, in the past, the city has funded EDA to get going, so on, so forth, for different projects and stuff, especially up on top of the hill, and stuff like that, and I think we're all coming out of the same pot.
I think it's very appropriate to transfer that land ownership to the city, and include it in Keasling Park, um, so it's a question of whether you would like to pre, uh, present this to the EDA, and, uh, the manager and I will be presenting that to EDA upon your approval, for either a purchase acquisition, or if the EDA has an interest in donating it to the city, that's certainly an option.
Just an idea.
Just a comment, I mean, the Park and Rec did vote unanimously pursuing acquisition of it, news coming like this, I'd like to table it this evening, check with our city attorney or the EDA, I mean, if the EDA is even looking at something like that, donating or however the land acquisition transfers, why not?
Well, I guess I, I just propose, this is the initiating discussion process, did Park and Rec want it, would the city be willing to buy it, and if it, when it gets to the EDA at the next meeting, if they want to give it to the city for free, that's their decision.
Mm-hmm.
If they want to.
So, we just agreed tonight?
Authorize the purchase of it this evening and move forward, goes back to EDA for their consent or approval.
Right, yeah, it's gonna end, it's gonna end with the EDA making the final decision, do, do we want to sell, or do we want to give it back to the city and just let it, let it go, so, that was the pro- the thought process?
Mm-hmm.
I guess, I'm wondering what prompted us to want to bu- buy this, I mean, what, what brought this to the forefront, I thought maybe the EDA was trying to sell it, but it was something that we're requesting of them?
Every so often, we look at the city-owned property, the EDA-owned property, and, uh, and, and keep in mind that the EDA actually owns its own property, as compared to the city owns all the PUC property, all the park property, all, you know, any other property that the city might own, so they are two separate entities with that respect, um, so we look at, uh, at the properties, uh, it came up probably in the discussion of buying that little piece of, uh, what was it, 600 square feet of land down on the south end, you know, these are times where we go, yeah, oh yeah, well, by the way, the EDA owns a piece of property next to the Keasling House, that at this point in time, one, we're not actively looking to sell it, and two, even if, if we sold it, what sort of impact would it have on the Keasling House property? And so, it was kinda like, oh, we don't really kinda like that, that picture of putting a building in there, and now you've got the Keasling House tucked in this little narrow slot, so we said, why don't we straighten this, I'll clean it up, we'll have the city buy it from the EDA and be done with it, and then, uh, if you followed the issue sheet, uh, EDA's been getting $1,000 a year revenue off of that from the lamplighter, and the park department has been expending time and energy to keep it clean and keep it mowed on their own, because it, they use it as a park, and so, you got the park using it, having all the expenses, and you got the EDA owning it, getting all the revenue, and I thought, well, let's clean all this up, have the city own it, have the Park and Rec collect the $1,000, and then that thousand then pays for the grass mowing and the weed, you know, spraying, and all the other things that go with owning property, so it was just cleaning it up, that's, that's all we're trying to do, is just clean it up, 'cause it, I just can't imagine that, uh, the park would be really, Park and Rec would be really pleased if the EDA sold that off and, and you got a 25-foot lot with the Keasling House tucked way back there, it, it just wouldn't be what I would hope the downtown would look like in that particular area, so, it's just a method of saying, EDA owns it, its best use is, is, in, in my mind, is Park and Rec.
And I guess in my mind, I thought it always was Park and Rec, so.
Yeah, yeah.
With that, with that discussion, and I'll, uh, reword it, I'd just like to authorize pursuing the purchase of the EDA-owned parcel next, south of the Keasling House.
The acquisition.
The acquisition.
Okay.
I could say purchase, I'm gonna say pursue it.
I'll, I'll offer the second. I need some time to think about that purchase, I'd, concept, but, we got some time.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
I guess, how did we, how did they ever come by the $1,000 rent? Is that negotiable, or is that a fixed rate?
It's fixed right now.
Yeah.
Uh, it has to do with, uh, a negotiated value of the parking spaces on the back end of that lot, and, and the EDA at that time came to consensus with the lamplighter business that it afforded them $1,000 worth of value. Uh, in addition to that, they have their exhaust, uh, out of their kitchen, encroaches on the airspace of that, of that lot adjacent, because the, the lot line is right on the wall of the, the lamplighter, and so, for that $1,000, they get the parking and the ability to have their exhaust, uh, kitchen exhaust go out over the top of, of the lot. It, it only goes out, I don't know, 18 inches, two feet, or whatever it is, but it's, but it's, it encompasses those two things.
Now, say there's, you know, we've had some activity at the Keasling House for the last few years, do they get to use the parking, or they're, you know, or it's actually used by the lamplighter?
Used by the lamplighter, but I don't know that anybody who's ever parked there has been chased out of there.
Sure, I'm just, just curious.
So, and we've never charged for the lawn mowing or anything, they're collecting funds, and we've never charged them?
Right, the Park and Rec has basically looked at it as a, as a space to enhance the Keasling Har- uh, Keasling House facility there, I mean, we had, um, displays in the back. Yes, we've used the area for programming also.
Yeah, so the Park and Rec put in all the pavers and all the, all the improvements.
Yes, mm-hmm, correct.
So, would this be a good time to take a look at that $1,000 fee, has that been there forever, or for a long period of time?
It has not increased with inflation over time, it's in a negotiated agreement in the lease with, between the EDA and, uh, the lamplighter, and then it will be transferred to the city in the lamplighter if acquisition occurs.
So, the last time it was reviewed was when?
I have to check with the EDA, it's their lease.
Yeah, and the other side of that coin, I guess, is, uh, the lamplighter has the right of first refusal, uh, on that parcel, and they have signed off that because this is a EDA-city transfer, that they're, they're waiving that aspect of it, if, if we were actively, you know, selling it, uh, if we had a buyer, uh, the lamplighter could then in turn match that price, and then they would own it, uh, then they could build out, if they wanted to, and expand, and, and the Keasling House would be in the same boat as if the EDA sold it.
Right.
Or, you know, put up a spec building and.
Squeezed in, yeah.
Am I correct, by, at times, there's been some issues with the exhaust system on the side of the building there for cleanliness and things like that, I mean, the picture that we're looking at here doesn't look too attractive.
Yeah, there was, there was a, uh, a corrective action, actually quite a few years ago, uh, and it's not been probably in the last, you know, three, four, it's been longer than that, where, uh, the, uh, exhaust pipe needed to be cleaned more often, and that was brought to the lamplighter's attention, and, uh, we haven't had any issues brought to our attention since, and, uh, I think Park and Rec was the one that, that brought it to our attention, and said, hey, you know, you're, there's a dead spot of, of soil because of the grease that was dripping down, and that's been, that's been taken care of.
Okay.
So, do we have any plans, um, is this just gonna be green space, we don't have plans to put any equipment, or, or any plans, it's just an acquisition of land?
That would be Park and Rec's question.
There are a couple of ideas in the conceptual master plan of the park, including a German garden, uh, but certainly, uh, outdoor programming, you know, period-appropriate historical programming in that space, uh, it's been used from time to time for different downtown activities also, you know, through the chamber and, and, um, other interpretive programs, but we don't have any plans to develop a large structure there.
My concern is, we always say we're gonna just stay with what we have, but we keep expanding a little bit more, and a little bit more, and a little bit more, and it's fine if it stays green space, and we're not gonna start putting structures and equipment and, and dumping more money into it, but, we've got some big projects coming up.
We've got a nice playground coming in German Park a block away, so I do not envision a playground at Keasling Park. It's been more programming activities that, you need space to go out and do some things, uh, I'm sure that there was, uh, some crafts or something, you know, a few years ago that was in there, they, they go in, they use the space, they leave. Battery came in to do a demonstration of the interpretive history of the New Ulm battery, um, so it's interpretive green space for the park.
Thanks, Tom.
You betcha.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Item 5B, consider request from Green Mill Best Western Plus at 2101 South Broadway to authorize the extension of the liquor license to the parking lot for Bach Fest after-party outside the event to be held on Saturday, March 3, 2018, and schedule a public hearing for noise variance to allow live bands to perform in the parking lot for their event.
All right, I'll, I'll tackle the first one, I'll offer a motion to offer resolution, waive the reading, extend the liquor licensing, liquor license into the parking lot for March 3.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer resolution, waive reading, any more discussion? Seeing none, Finance Director, please ca- or call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries.
And I'll give you the second one, schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, February 20, 2018, at 4:30 for the request for the noise variance permit.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion?
You know, last year, we only had, I think, one noise complaint, I don't know if they called all of us, or only a couple of us, but.
I believe it was the same individual that called all of us.
10:30 at night?
Yeah.
And he called every one of us?
10:35.
Other than that, yeah, 10:35, I think it was 10:36.
I think we have.
But other than that, we didn't get any, any notifications.
I think we have a couple of representatives from.
We do?
The Green Mill, do you, uh, I've got a question for you, I guess, could you step up to the mic?
Step up to the mic, name and address, please, for the record.
Chad Corman, the Director of Catering at Green Mill.
I guess my question has, would be, have you contacted your neighbors at all in regards to maybe resolve issues from last year for this year?
Yeah, um, yes, as to my knowledge, uh, the neighbors have been taken care of, to reduce any calls this year, um, and the vans will be scheduled to quit by 11:30 PM, so.
That's pretty successful for you last year, right?
Yeah, yeah, um, to my knowledge.
The weather and.
Yeah, um, you know, it's hard when, when it's cold, you know, people always want to come to town and experience it at the brewery, um, so, you know, we'd like to have the hotel available and, and the event space, but, um, I just think it's, it's a good opportunity for people that are coming into town to enjoy the celebrations of New Ulm and what we have to offer, so, in a safe manner, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's no, motion carries. Item 5C, consider resolution accepting donations and memorials to the New Ulm Public Library.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Oh, it's resolution.
Resolution, sorry, Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 5D, consider approving the payment of $20,570.06 to the legal heirs of the past employee due to the 2014 Supreme Court decision, Mr. Grumman.
Prior to, uh, 2014, the, uh, guiding principles for dealing with, uh, workers' comp claims and retirement benefits were followed by all cities and, uh, counties and school districts alike, and in 2014, the Minnesota Supreme Court issued a decision in Ekdal, the Independent School District, number 213, which then changed how that calculation was to occur. Uh, since that time, they've been working through, uh, how to deal with the, all of those past payments to those individuals that found themselves on a workers' comp, uh, disability claim, uh, and how it impacted their retirement, uh, PRA offset. We were contacted by the state of Minnesota, uh, stating that, uh, we had one case that this applied to, and that we were to, uh, prepare the calculation and, uh, run it past the state to make sure it was done correctly, in order to pay that employee, uh, that was impacted by, uh, workers' comp and PRA. That individual, uh, had, uh, passed on, uh, the spouse had passed on, so what we're basically dealing with is the estate, which would be the, uh, the children of, of the past employee, and so, we've gone through, uh, the work to prepare the calculation, it's been approved by the state of Minnesota, and now we're asking for, uh, authorization to write the payments to the legal heirs of the past employee. I know we've had our city attorney, uh, review this particular issue for appropriateness, and he may have some additional legal comments that he wants to put forth, if you have any questions on the specifics, I'm sure he'd be willing to answer.
Mr. President, councilors, um, I think Brian has accurately stated the background of this, um, at the current status of the law, the city's got a legal obligation to pay this out, I believe the amount has been approved, um, for, if the council's gonna move forward on this, I would recommend that, um, the motion be amended to indicate that the amount espated should be paid to the estate of Leroy Haas, we need to identify the employee, we can't, think we can just have it say, a past employee, um, and I've been working with, um, Human Resources, Ms. Boomgarten, to confirm how that should be, the check would be made out if you approve this, and to make sure that, um, it's issued appropriately, uh, I don't know what, if anything was done with Mr. Haas's estate, um, I know he has probably eight children, um, and if it's paid to the estate, they will then have to figure out where it goes, um, we're not the probate court, we can't decide who the heirs are, but it would be payable to his estate, so with that suggested amendment, um, I would urge you to agree to adopt this, because we have the obligation to do it, and this will allow us to comply with the law.
So, so my question is, and not, I know we're only getting part of the story here, but, and the law changed in 2014, so I'm assuming here that at some point, an attorney got ahold of us, saying, hey, the law changed, you owe us some money?
No.
The law didn't change, the law's been the same, the Supreme Court told everyone that everyone had been not applying it correctly.
But somebody had to tell us, you owe us some money.
Yes, I believe that, Ms. Boomgarten could answer.
Shawna Boomgarten, Human Resources Director, we actually got contacted by the Minnesota Department of Labor and Industry, um, this past fall, and we need to make this payment by, um, February, the February 28th of this year, so that's who we were contacted with by, was the Department of Labor, and indicating that we only had one employee that applied.
So, people basically all across the state are being notified to fix this?
Yes, yes, all across the state, yes, um, and we were self-insured at the time, so it's going to come out of, out of our costs, the, if, um, like, we're, our insurer right now is the League of Minnesota Cities, so the League of Minnesota Cities is, has many, many calculations that, and it'll cost them probably millions of dollars in back pay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Shawna. Any more questions?
With the direction of this city attorney, I'll motion to approve a payment of $20,570.06 to the. and 0.06 to the Leroy Haas estate and its legal heirs, past employee, due to the 2014 Minnesota Supreme Court decision.
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Where will this come out of? What account?
General reserve.
Reserves? All right, thanks.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pulsed no? Motion carries. Item five E, consider a motion to set a date for a public hearing on the 2018 Utility Street and Alley Improvements Group One Project for Tuesday, March 20th, 2018, at 4:30 PM.
I'll move it.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pulsed no? Motion carries. Item five F, consider authorizing construction of an office expansion at the Civic Center as requested by the New Ulm Steel Junior Hockey Team for a project cost of up to $10,000. Mr. Grumman?
This project came up when we were talking about the changing rooms and the authorization to proceed with that. Staff put together the information. I wanted to get it to the city council so it's not hanging out there, and, and everybody's wondering where we are with that, because it was part of the, the discussion that we said we'll do later. Well, some things have happened since then, and that is that the steel have notified us that they will be terminating the contract and, and trying, and then we'll be negotiating as they stated, a potential five-year contract for the future, you know. So, my recommendation, I guess, would be to receive the report at this point in time, and then allow this construction project to be part of the negotiation of the new five-year contract, just because they've asked for other things, and this might play into how, how and how we handle the other items that they, that they're asking for.
Mr. President, I'd strongly urge the council to agree to just receive this at this time and not take any action on it. To my knowledge, we haven't gotten any specifics from the steel about what they are going to state their financial position is. I don't know exactly what they are asking for, but I think if you're going into negotiations, you don't start making commitments until you know what the entire package is, and if that's something that Park and Rec and the council is interested in getting into. You just keep your bargaining chips on your side of the table as you go into this. So it's something that you certainly might be asked to consider in the future, but at this point, I think it's premature to start authorizing expenditures when we have a tenant who's announcing that they're doing an early termination.
I thought how I read this, that they're already starting this. Didn't I read that somewhere in here that this is already in process?
They're starting the construction of the locker rooms.
The locker room.
Yeah, that we have authorized.
Yeah, the changing room in that storage area, that, that's been bid and started to be constructed. This was, this was one of those secondary issues that were, that were brought up, and we said, "We'll deal with it later." And I guess, based on what we know now, that we would just say, "Let's deal with this as part of the negotiations." That should be probably in the next two, three months, I would suspect, we're going to be working on, on that negotiation of the, of the lease, because they're going to be concluding their, uh, their lease.
September?
What is it, in May? I suppose it could go to September, but new one would start in September.
The season will be concluding, you know, the regular season in mid-March, and then playoffs ensue the second half of March and early April.
Yeah, but the new lease would be starting in, like, September 1st or something like that. So, so we'll be working on the language, we'll bring it back to the city council when we've got more information on, on what's feasible, and, and had an opportunity to talk to the blacks on, on the extension of, of the lease for, you know, five more years. So this will be another, a component of that, of that lease. Because it, you know, the odds are we're going to have a lease extension, let's hope we are, but we wouldn't want to build this second office and then come to realize that they're going to another community, you know, they're not going to extend the lease. So this, this should occur realistically after a future commitment is made on their lease, if it's going to happen at all.
I think when we talked about this last time, we certainly support them remaining in our community, we support them being here, we support what they bring to our sports community. So I hope the contract is worked out to the favor of both the city and this hockey team, so I have quite good confidence that our city will make this work.
In addition, you had some, a paper document handed out. This was requested by one of the counselors on what is, what are the hours and what's the revenue received, you know, to kind of put everything in perspective of who, who's, you know, paying a large portion of the operations of the Civic Center, and, and the number of hours that they provide ice on, and...
Tom, will you put that up? I think that might be interesting for the public to look at that. I don't know if we can blow that up, or if you can kind of...
Well, the top part, the top part is the, is the hours used, and then the bottom part is the revenue, which is resultant of those hours, through the hourly rate of using the, the ice space. The blue is the New Ulm Hockey Association. They're the largest provider of revenue, as they rent about eight, well, way in the beginning, it was 875 hours, but last year, it was 645 hours, and that compares to 213 hour, or 214 hours from the steel, which is in the purple, the far right, the far-right columns, because they, they were not there in the prior years. One thing to note, on the steel's payment of $35,000 is that 4,000 of that is locker room rent, so it's not really rental of ice. So you got to almost take 4,000 out of there to, to really result in ice-to-ice calculations like everybody else has. So, as that was requested, it has now been...
One comment I'm going to make, I actually requested this just to let the general public see who, who really supports our Civic Center, and I know the steel is a year and a half, year and three-quarter contract. I just found it odd, you've got the New Ulm Hockey, figure skating, our high school, and yet we've got a lot of demands coming from somebody who's been renting our ice for a year and a half. I just hope we don't bend over and give away the farm with it. I'm not that much for it.
I guess I've got a question for Tom. In the past, have we had any of the other, I mean, whether it's the New Ulm Hockey, figure skating, or the high school, recommend that they would like to have their own offices in a public-owned building?
Counselor Mack, we do from time to time get requests from other users, and when reasonable, you know, we honor those requests. You know, the Hockey Association has a storage room and a skate sharpening room, there's a hockey coaches' room for the association and the high school coaches, there's a figure skating coaches' room. So we do have, you know, accommodations made with the other major user groups. But they're, you know, hourly renters, and the steel is an annual leaseholder. There's a difference between an hourly customer and an annual leaseholder.
So do they pay rent then for those spaces, or that's negotiated into their, their rent, or, or their use?
The coaches' office spaces, they do not pay for those. Those we provide for their use, along with the Hockey Association's storage room. We don't have an actual lease agreement and payment plan set up for those spaces. You know, the high school would like to have dedicated locker rooms also, but we've not gone down that path, and, you know, they're...
Yeah, and add a note, from day one, you know, while this was even in construction, the, the, the high school hockey teams wanted to have a dedicated locker room, and Park and Rec and the city council at that time said, "This is a city building, this is a generic building for people to come and go. Nobody has ownership except the city." And this lease has been the first time where we actually have deviated from that policy. And so it's what, 16 years, you know, before we allowed somebody to have a permanent locker room?
Mr. President, Tom, I realize you kind of scrambled to put this together. I appreciate you doing that. One other aspect that I think the council might be interested in is the percentage of income, because it looks like roughly the steel would be about 15% or maybe even less of the overall income compared. They're the lowest of all the four users, and considering what everyone else is paying, they're not paying that much, and they're the only for-profit user, correct?
Correct.
Do we have a square footage size for an office that they are looking to construct?
That's in the packet, Counselor Mack.
I didn't know if I seen that.
I think it's about 12 foot by 12 foot, or 13 feet by 13 feet.
Thank you.
And again, that's one of their requests, of about maybe 10 requests in a next lease discussion.
If you remember, you know, when we were talking about the changing rooms, staff had, had estimated, or guesstimated, that it would cost roughly $35,000 to put that office in. And what, what we've done, basically, is fit an office space into that location. If, we may not have put the walls right there if we would have just put an office in, which then would mean we need to have sprinkler heads realigned, which then means we have to have light fixtures rearranged. So this space is set up to deal with just the bare necessities, so we don't have to modify or change the sprinklers or whatever. Had it been, like, "This is the space I want, I need it 20 by 20," we would likely have had, you know, much more cost involved in this, which was the reason why there was a consensus of $35,000. After we got into it and looked at it, we said, "Well, if we put the wall in between the sprinklers, and if we put this wall, you know, so it matches up with, you know, something else, we can, we can reduce some of those expenditures." So, that's what we've done, and I think that's what we'll be providing to the steel when we, you know, get to sitting down at the table for negotiations. And they may say, "Bob, I can't live with that, you know, I don't know." You know, they may say, "I need a bigger space," in which case, then we've got to deal with that.
We have prepared this preliminary plan in conjunction with conversations with the building official, the facility maintenance supervisor at Park and Rec, and the steel, and they do feel that this is entirely adequate for additional office space for their operations.
Are we using our offices out there?
Yes, all the other spaces in the building are occupied and used. We have no extra space in the building.
So they're used on a daily basis?
Yes, all of our office spaces are used, and the storage spaces, and the multi-use spaces are, are used. And, you know, from an operational standpoint, this expanded office is doable. You know, it's a common space, the commons area. You've probably been to events at, at the facility, and it, you know, taking this square footage out of the commons area, I think is compatible with present programming and operations in the facility.
So these walls aren't going all the way up because of sprinkling systems and stuff, right?
That's my understanding.
But if they, if they do go up, they're set up so they meet the letter of the sprinkling code.
Yes.
And there will be, the lights that are there will be just blocked off, and we'll, we'll put service-mounted lights where they're supposed to be. So it's, it's, it's as low priced as we can get it to meet the letter of the building code, and so with that, I think we're meeting, you know, the steel's needs.
Yes.
It's not burden, burdening the, the space, but I think it should be part of the overall five-year lease that they're talking about, and how it all plays out.
Any more questions?
Recommendations to table this? Is that my understanding?
I'll just receive it for information at this point in time, and let Tom work, work the lease negotiations with this included in it.
Okay, I'll offer that motion that we received the, the report.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
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 Pulsed no? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Item five H, consider resolution requesting the Chief Judge of the District Court to appoint a charter commission to review the existing New Ulm City Charter. Did I go too far?
I'll do G first.
All right, let's go to the fire department.
There we go.
All right. Five G, consider a resolution accepting donations of $350 gift card from Walmart to the New Ulm Fire Department.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none? Finance Director, please call the roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Now we'll go to five H, consider resolution requesting the Chief Judge of the District Court to appoint a charter commission to review the existing New Ulm City Charter for appropriate changes. Mr. Grumman?
Attached, you have the issue sheet, the state statute for 10.05, which talks about charter commissions, and a list of individuals who have put forth their name as a, as a volunteer for that. Today, I did receive one more name, Mike Wise, from Thirvion Insurance, also through his name, our direction, should, you know, should he be put on the list. The bottom line is that the last time we did this was 2011. The judge's order set the charter commission up for a period of four years. Actually, the city had requested only to do it for one year, because we figured we could get it done in a year, and, and we did. Yeah, it's just that, in the state statute that you see there, it talks about setting members up at, on four-year and two-year cycles, you know, just like the city council, that there's, every two years, there's a section, you know, falls off and a new section comes on, or could get reappointed. And so, in 2014, that was the, the duration of that, of that group of seven individuals that were on the, the last charter commission, and we have not had a charter commission since. So we would need to go through the process of asking the judge, District Court Judge, to reappoint a charter commission for the city in Ulm with membership between seven and 15 members, and you've got a list of individuals, plus anybody on the city council, that you may want to put forth. I think at this point, you can say, "These are the people we want." We want, you have an option of seven, nine, you know, 11, 13, or 15. It's an odd number, just like the city council, that you would want to have on that. You've got 10 on the list, 11th one put their name in, as I mentioned, Mike Wise, and then any council members that would like to participate on that particular activity. You have a sample resolution that I, I handed out tonight. This is the format that it basically will look like. You know, it's got the typical wherethes. It instructs the city attorney's off, office to prepare the petition that actually goes to the Chief Judge, and the petition shall request that the charter commission be comprised of, you know, you insert the number, how many people you want on the commission, and then there's a list of those names and their addresses. Addresses are important, because this is a city charter, and you can't have somebody from a non-city, you know, residence on here, or from a different locale. And what we did change from the last one was section number four, which basi- which basically says, uh, the petition shall request that a simple majority of the commission members be appointed for a period of four years from the date of the court order, with the remaining members appointed for a period of two years from the date of the court order. And I think, uh, the intent of this language would be to, in, you know, always have a, uh, charter commission appointed, so that, you know, if you don't have a call for it for eight years, you don't have to go through the court process, you still would have this group of people that are, every two years, uh, I'd, I'd have to look, um, and, and look to the city attorney on this one here, but I would assume we would have to go to the chief district court judge to reappoint every two years, to appoint or reappoint. I don't know that the city council would just appoint two or three more, because the court appoints them. I'm assuming that the court has to reappoint and refill. So, it's probably a simpler process than going to, than starting it up as a brand-new charter commission, but it's still, I think, would have to run through the, the chief district court judge. I, it didn't really say nothing about it.
The, uh, excuse me, Mr. President, you know, the statute provides that, in the, cause if, if in fact the council would want to keep, this is sort of a standing commission, uh, it probably would be possible, but obviously you're probably going to have people coming and going, um, if it goes on indefinitely. Every time that happens, we would have to petition the district court, they would have to, the court would have to remove the person, appoint someone new. Or, I mean, the alternative that the commission really would have is if they would want to disband, they would have the ability to do that, if they thought their work was completed, they could do that. But it's really not the council's decision to keep them open. The court would appoint them for the terms as specified, um, so it might be a situation where we would have four years max. I don't think, um, there's any way with any of the current issues, as I understand them, uh, last time around, they were accomplished within a year. I would certainly think, you know, we'd be able to do that again. So it would be there for a period of time, but if the, if the commission thought that its work was finished and there was no need for it to continue, it could, um, disband.
So it can't be part of the charter, or charter to have a standing?
No, this is, this is a creature of state law.
Right.
And we have to comply with what's in this, so if there's going to be a charter commission, it's gotta be, again, appointed by the chief judge of the district. And I'll have to check on this, I believe the chief judge of the fifth judicial district is, uh, Judge Michelle Dietrich. She's chamber down in Marshall. So we would be sending this to her if in fact she's the current chief judge. And then she would, I would assume she will agree with any recommendations that we have as far as who the members should be. But that's the process we have to go to, and it's really under the court supervision.
Yeah, I was on the internet and I did some research, and there's a lot of cities our size, size and larger that have permanent charter commissions. They're constantly ongoing, they would, they don't decide, well, now we're gonna appoint a new one, to just set up a charter commission and keep it going.
Well, the court has to set it up, and if, if it's not terminated, presumably it just continues. But then, again, as people come and go, whether it's, uh, citizens that have been appointed by the court, or if there's council members, um, you know, if people retire, there's going to, you need to have those changes. But I don't see anything in the, uh, statute that requires a sunset, where it has.
I know when we did this in two thousand and eleven, I sat on this, um, being a fairly new councillor, and I think I was one of that push, cause our old charter was really, really old. And there was stuff in there about what you needed to do if you rode your horse into town, and where you could park your horse and tie your horse up, and there was some, just some old, we had a lot of old cleanup language. And, and I know Susan Nierengarten from the city attorney's office took the lead and, and did a lot of cleanup work. So a lot of that's done, so there isn't as much work and, that we need to have done. And I think it was less than six months when we cleaned up the charter last time with all that work and hundreds of pages that we cleaned up and took lines out, and I think we shrunk it a whole bunch because we changed a lot of stuff that didn't need to be in there. So I don't think we have anywhere near that amount of work, and I, and I don't think we need to have an ongoing charter system. I think we can let it, um, let it fold once it's done, if the judge will do that. Now Roger, I read in here that the, that the district court acting through the chief judge, so I think this, if I remember right, Judge, um, Rodenberg has signed the first one.
He signed the first order, he may have been the chief judge.
He might have been.
Yeah.
Might have been, but I kind of see this, that, that maybe our local judge can order this.
No, I, I disagree, councillor, I think, and it's, and it specifically says through the, if the chief judge were to delegate this to another district court judge, but my reading of this is we start by going, sending it to the chief judge, and I don't think it's gonna matter.
Yeah, but I, I do recall that the chief judge does appoint the people. It's not, we can recommend, but the judge makes the final decision on who, who is part of this commission. And I know apparently there's some, already some volunteers, but I don't know where they came from all of a sudden, but I think we'd have enough, I think that it should be opened up to, um, the general public for ten days or whatever, for folks, other folks who may want to be part of this commission. I liked the number seven last time, that worked really well. Could we have a couple alternates that, that maybe if people are sick or can't, maybe have a family emergency and can't be involved?
Yeah, I don't know that that shows up. It doesn't provide for alternates.
No, I mean, if we want to appoint a, the last, I mean, before we make an appointment to the judge, if somebody can't make it, then we have another person to go to.
Then, then you'd be better off appointing nine or eleven in case somebody has conflicts.
Um, I think we should have two city councillors on there.
That was my question, how many councillors, volunteer or revolter who gets appointed to it? Cause as a new councillor, I'd be interested in that going into the charter. I've read it, but going back into it.
I'd certainly be willing to take a second, um, stand on there again as well. Uh, but I'd like to see it open to the public and have people call city hall or something, or Brian specifically, and, and get their names on the list, and then maybe the personnel committee could narrow it down, or, or bring the list to us and we, we select at the next meeting.
Well, the council's going, I, I think the council should recommend the content, oh, they're gonna have the resolution. I think they should recommend who, either they would recommend specifically who the members would be, including the number of members, or you would delegate it to the city manager, uh, to do that. But if you would like to know who's gonna be on this commission, I think that should be included in the resolution.
I think I recall last time we did it here, because we talked about we wanted a business rep and we wanted a community rep, we wanted different representatives on this commission, or this, um, I remember that dialogue.
The, the names are on the resolution.
Yes.
They're on there, so the selection process by the city council, you know, let's say we get a hundred names, or we can only have.
Right.
Maximum fifteen, so the city council has to winnow that down to the size they want, and then select the people they want, the names get put on the resolution, and on we go. So if you, uh, so in essence, what, uh, what I'm hearing, at least councillor Schultz say is, we would put this back on the next city council.
Mm-hmm.
Agenda, allow anybody to, uh, put forth their name between now and then, and then that list will then be winnowed down in some process.
Yeah, there's some great names on here already, but there's also, I mean, who knows if there's other, somebody else has got a real passion and wants to be part of this.
I guess I agree, there should be two councillors, and if we got two that are volunteering, I don't have a problem with that.
Either five or seven potentially more.
Right.
There'll be a, it wasn't easy last time, I remember we had a difficult time picking people last time. But if we can identify, I think what we did last time was identified we wanted a community rep, a business rep, a, I don't, we had categories, we tried to pick somebody we thought was invested in each of those categories.
Yeah, the council ultimately will, of course, decide who they want to recommend. You know, part of this, I can see reasons to increase the number, um, nothing else, you have a quorum at your meetings, uh, to expand it, cause otherwise if you're going to have one business person, or one banking person, or, you know, one whatever, you've got one person, period. I think the, the more minds you get into this, probably the better.
Did we have seven last time?
Yeah, we had seven, uh, but, you know, one of the, one of the underlying themes that you see at the League of Minnesota Cities is that we're having a hard time getting people to come forth and volunteer for government committees and boards and commissions. And so it's kind of like, and, and my first thing that crosses my mind is, we've got a bunch of people that would like to do this, and we're gonna say, no, no, we don't want you, we only want seven. You know, it's kind of like, you know, if you have interested people, it's kind of like, maybe that's a good thing.
But we do have, right now, we're, we got eleven, with two here, we got thirteen already. And time they print it in the paper, you know, we postponed it for two weeks, we could sit there with twenty-some volunteers.
Good.
That's a good thing, that'd be a good problem.
It's better than two.
Right. So, more to be.
Maybe the mayor's wife would volunteer, who knows?
Yep, hand went up.
There we go.
All right, so I guess, uh, we would need a motion to probably table this till the next meeting, instruct, instruct, uh, city manager to, uh, uh, collect any names that, of residents that wish to, uh, participate with this, and bring it back at the next.
So moved. Second.
There we go.
We have a motion in the second, any more discussion? Are we gonna take that list and what it was done right here, we're gonna have somebody look at it and make a recommendation?
I would recommend we do it right here.
Okay.
That's my thought, but I don't, it's up to.
No, that's fine.
I think we should all come to with some consensus first about what areas do we want to make sure we have representative from.
And we'll be supplied the list prior to the meeting, so we can each give our own ideas.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Sure, sounds great.
And more discussion? Yeah, last time it was, it was tough because there was a lot of really good people, and we just did our best.
No more discussion? On favor, say aye.
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 Posse, nope, motion carries. Item six A. Consider acceptance of a list of claims paid and approve a list of claims to be paid. The claims paid amount of nine hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and one dollars and sixty-five cents, and approve a list of claims to be paid in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars and sixteen cents. So moved. Second.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, any discussion? Seeing none, on favor, say aye.
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 Posse, nope, motion carries. No more business, meeting adjourned.